Welcome to the show, Robert Barnes. I hate to tell you this, but I'm having massive computer problems right now. It's reaching critical mass and it keeps shutting down on me, which is why my computer, my camera's not on. I wish I could see you. I do love you though. Thank you for being here. How are you?
Good, good.
All right. If I disappear, you can just talk to the chat for a few minutes. I'll be back in like under two minutes. Um, but let's talk about Wauwatosha.
Yes, indeed.
Wauwatosha. So I have held off on reading, uh, the, the apology letter. They sent, uh, because I have, I have, I've promised for like months now, we're going to get Robert Barnes on so we can read it together. And it's just, let me find, I'll find it in my email, but why don't you give the rundown, Robert, of what happened here? And, um, why, why this lawsuit was important and while I find that?
Yeah, no problem. So, I mean, the, uh, for those that, uh, don't, uh, recall or, or remember, uh, the, the, the Wauwatosha, political, uh, which, I'm, I'm blinking on the moment on, on which, uh, body it was.
The Wauwatosha School Board.
Yeah. And, and when-
It was the porn in the school, uh, curriculum that the parents were protesting.
Correct. And for those that don't know, uh, Wauwatosha's in, is it, what, what, Wauwatosha's in Milwaukee County, as I recall. Um, or, or is it in Waukesha County?
Actually, I'm not sure about that. Does it matter?
I mean, it locally and locally they call it TOSA. So the, uh, that's a, I'm pretty, it, it, it's sort of Western Milwaukee County, as I, uh, recall correctly. But, uh, that, whether it's a local city council, county commission, school board, any, uh, government meeting like that, uh, in a public forum, there are limits on their ability to try to prohibit people, uh, from making comments. I mean, it's a, it's a running refrain in part from the TV show Parks and Recreation. Uh, you know, remember about the things you can get up and say, and it was a, it was a Beavis and Butthead episode about your right to be able to get up and say whatever you want. Um, you know, I mean, I think Beavis gets up and says, you know, he would, he wants to see it all burn, burn, burn it all, take it down, down, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, I mean, pretty, pretty broad berth for, because it's a first amendment protected forum. It's the same issue as when politicians open up public accounts on social media and try to ban people from them. That's currently pending before the Supreme Court of the United States. Uh, they held oral argument on this past week. So that means the same logic, uh, but what happens is a lot of these politicians don't like people criticizing them. Don't like people exposing their bad acts. And so what they, what they try to do now and then is misuse and abuse their power and preclude and prevent people from being able to publicly speak their mind or expose the politicians' bad acts or bad policies. And, uh, that's ba- and this was just the latest iteration of it, this time just by the school board of Wauwatosha that, I mean, not only did it to you, but was also trying to do it to other people in terms of silencing them, limiting what they can say, uh, threatening retaliation of different kinds in terms of future or current speaking rights based on what they said. Uh, you exposed them at the time, but unfortunately had to bring suit because of their own actions.
Yeah. So I'm not going to play the video again because I'm having such terrible problems with, with my computer. And I know that the second I try and do it, it's going to make me shut down. So we've played it here before. You guys can go on my channel and pull up the, uh, wa- just search Wauwatosha on my channel. You'll find it. You can watch it. It's me, you know, just giving them an earful about what they should and should not do, and that the things they were engaging in that night could get them sued. And then they had the nerve to not even be able to wait 30 seconds for me to finish my three minutes. They muted me, they cut me off, they violated my freeze for 30 seconds, Robert. They just couldn't wait 30 seconds. And because of that, um, I, I, I contacted Robert Barnes. I was like bugging him for like every week for a month. Every single Monday I had a, I had like a alarm set on my phone, email Barnes. You still looking into it, Robert? You looking at my case? And it took him like two months and finally he was like, yeah, I'll do it. I was like, nice. But you all helped me raise $10,000. We sent those checks over to Robert Barnes. He got a filing done and it's been a year. And, you know, you know, I didn't even ask you this, and I don't know if you can tell me or not, but was this ever going to go in front of a judge or did they start trying to, you know, get, get this over with, you know, right away?
So the typical response of a city or county or state or federal government agency of any kind is almost always to litigate. It's very rare to be willing to concede, uh, early on. Usually they will move to dismiss, they'll file other motions, whatever procedural motions are available. They'll demand invasive discovery typically, uh, to, it, they do things like we're seeing a lot of them in, in the vaccine mandate cases that I'm doing currently. Very similar behavior where even where it's pretty obvious that they're in the wrong. They're going to find, uh, they try to find every scheme, system trick available to usually evade responsibility and accountability. And in the process harass the heck out of the plaintiffs, like, and, you know, do, uh, you know, give us your medic- like in the cases of the vaccine mandate cases as an example. Demanding, you know, tell us all your political beliefs, tell us all your religious beliefs, tell us, give us your entire medical history for your entire life. Um, and, and some courts are sadly complicit in allowing them to do it. Uh, and then some lawyers, uh, don't push back like they could or should. So the, that is, my experience has been even when you get them dead wrong, it is very rare for them to acknowledge and admit that they were wrong out of the gate. Uh, in this case, they initially were going to bring motions to dismiss, but upon further review of the law that we cited and put it pointed out. Plus, well, I've had a lot of success suing in Wisconsin, especially on these kind of civil rights related cases. The, they really took a, uh, deep assessment, recognized their own risk and quickly realized that if they were wrong, they were going to run up the attorney's fees, uh, that the city, uh, would have to pay. Wauwatosha would have, school board have to pay. And they clearly were in the wrong on, there are some aspects of the suit that they could contest and fight. There are other aspects that we were, we had the better argument on. And they recognized that, uh, Judge Stat Mueller, who I've been in front of multiple times before, would likely recognize that that part of the case we were going to win on, and all we have to do is win on something to get our attorney's fees, even if we don't win on everything.
Right.
And, and they made the savvy decision at that point, okay, let's talk resolution. What's really, uh, it's unusual that they were willing to acknowledge their, that settle right out of the gate, uh, as early as they did in the process. But what's extraordinary in your case is they pretty much never issue an apology. Whenever I've requested an apology in the past, they've never given it. Uh, they would rather fight because they know, okay, maybe they'll be more responsible for fees down the road. But if they make certain offers of judgment, they can limit that. And so they were pretty comfortable and confident they could probably do that. So usually they never agree to an apology. But in your case, you actually got the apology too.
I was worried when I sent you the email and I was like, I need a, I need no confidentiality and I needed a public apology. I was a little worried that you were going to be like, oh my God, stop it, stop it. Like, can we just move on? And you didn't, you didn't, you didn't even, you were just like, okay. And, and then the next thing you know, I, I had it. And I, I also was pretty, uh, shocked by this. So I'm going to read this to you guys now. I'm going to see if I can pull it up. If I can't pull it up, well, then I'll just read it off my phone, uh, because my computer is acting so badly. And I do apologize, uh, for all of it. Um, here we go. PDF. Wauwatosha. No, I don't need this little screen. Okay, here we go. The Wauwatosha School District, Ms. Fox dated October 20th of 2023. Ms. Fox, regarding the events of October 24th, 2022, the Wauwatosha School Board offers you an apology for the manner in which it handled your presentation during the public comments agenda item at the school board meeting. After the aforementioned school board meeting, the school board reviewed its policies pertaining to public comment with legal counsel. Well, now that part's a little bit wrong. It wasn't right after the school board meeting. It was after we filed suit when they started reviewing their policies. Please be assured that the school board reflected on the October 24th, 2022 meeting and its response to your public comment has been appropriately addressed by the school board. Sincerely, Dr. Eric Jessup Anger. I know this had to really hurt him to write this letter.
I mean, well, properly named though, right? Dr. Anger?
I know, right? Can you, the simulation does not disappoint, you know? It just does not disappoint.
And I- But yeah, and it's thanks to everybody who supported it, that your willingness to bring it, uh, that, you know, the, that not only, you know, remedied what happened here and help fix it for the school board, but will impact other cases because these, uh, municipal defendants and their insurers share this kind of information to improve the quality of their community, recognizing these are public forum and they cannot take the retaliatory or speech discriminatory actions that they took in this case. That clearly they were unaware and underprised that they had legal consequences to. And now have had, not only, you know, had to pay money, but also had to, uh, issue a public apology and issue a bunch of corrections in their policies. So that, uh, so it'll impact everybody in Wauwatosha, but also it'll impact public bodies, school boards across the country, because they tend to track these kind of cases and change policies to limit their liability in the future, which will in turn enhance people's first amendment freedoms across the country. So thanks to everybody who participated. It's another example where in fact you can make a difference by fighting back.
Yeah. And the policies that they changed, we went over those, you know, in detail several times. We kind of went back and forth on that. Um, and we got many items that we wanted. Um, and I don't off the top of my head recall exactly which ones, but I do believe, uh, that they are not putting in, oh, I remember. We had them change disruptive, the word disruptive, which really bothered me. They said that they could stop anyone from, from making disruptive comments. And I asked them to put in, um, anyone engaging in the, the actual code of crim- of, uh, uh, what did I say? Not misconduct, not misconduct, but-
Disruptive.
Disrupt, not, they said disruptive. I said disorderly conduct. Because disruptive is not a thing. You can't be arrested for being disruptive, but you can be arrested for disorderly conduct, which has a code in the Wisconsin code that tells police officers what it is. So if you're not engaging in disorderly conduct, they can't stop you now.
Well, exactly, exactly. In the, in Wisconsin, I've sued before when they've tried to misapply the disorderly conduct provision. So it's something, in fact, Milwaukee County in particular, who had done it to pro-life protesters. So the, I, I have probably sued the cities and counties around Milwaukee. Probably, uh, well, definitely more than anybody else in civil rights cases over time. Uh, and then had a lot of success there, but it's striking that, uh, it keeps percolating up and they keep trying to extend and expand their power. Unless you call them on it, catch them in it, they, uh, they, they go AWOL. And it requires, you know, disciplining them for, for them to, you know, retract, retrace, step back and fix and remedy. Um, but here we got a lot, you, you got a lot more remedies than typically occurs. To get change of public policy, get a public, uh, apology, get, uh, you know, some amount of payment to recompense everything. And to get it very early in the process is highly unusual. Uh, and it was good to, to produce this outcome. And like I said, it'll have a broader public impact, but people can look at the cases, what's allowed, what's not allowed. And you're right, vague standards like disruptive conduct, non-criminal behavior. Uh, those kind of standards are not appropriate standards for them to be limiting public comment at a public hearing involving a public proceeding. Though, don't tell the judge in New York about that in the Trump case.
I have not been paying attention to that case. I am trying hard to ignore everything coming out. Cause I can't take the clown show anymore, Robert. I, I'm, I'm having such a hard time with the fact that it's even happening. I, I can't. Now, I don't remember if we got them to concede, and I, for some reason cannot find the, the policy as written now uh, at this current time, and it's because of my computer problems. But did we get them to take out the crap about, uh, not using board members' names?
I, I believe some of that was, and the only, the only places where they kept in any part of the policy was where they had case law on their side. Uh, uh, everything else changed. So there's certain areas where they, you, you can't, you know, prohibit them from using a, a name of a board member. You can prohibit certain kinds of private information from being disclosed, depending on the circumstances.
Oh, I think I remember what it was. They said you had to address your comments to the board president. But that doesn't mean that you can't use the names of other board members.
Correct.
So now you, you're not allowed to talk directly to, you know, somebody else on the, some other schmuck on the board. You have to talk to the president and be like, hey, uh, Dr. Anger, I want to talk to you about Jessica over there because she did this and she did that. And Jessica is this, and you can say that, you can say, and the, before they would stop anybody who said their names as if they were, as if they were Voldemort himself. And you're allowed, he must not be named.
To abusing and misusing power and the, uh, and not getting called on it, not facing consequence from it. And the, uh, and, and you see what, you know, where they get it from, uh, in, in the, uh, New York case with Trump, where a judge thinks he can do the same thing. He can prohibit people from talking about his clerk, that he can threaten gag orders and imprisonment and fines. And he's just routinely violating civil rights just as much as the Wauwatosha School Board did.
God, is that really happening? That-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Live time. Told lawyers they couldn't file motions in court. I mean, it's, it's insanity. Uh, turns out he likes to get his picture taken, uh, working out at different places. The guy's like 70.
I've seen him, yeah.
His wife, it turns out, is a, uh, has been actively on social media sharing anti-Trump memes, you know, during the trial.
Oh, great.
I mean, it's just a mockery, but you know, it was like the school board. It's these politicians that have grown accustomed to abusing their power and not facing consequence for it. And it's only, you know, lawsuits like this that make them face consequence that wake them up.
And this is not my first go around at this. Uh, every time I've done this, I have won. And this definitely feels like a win to me in Wauwatosha. Uh, the entire policy was changed. Many things were taken out. And, and one of these days, when I get, when I get my computer, my new computer, I've got a GiveSendGo going right now for the new computer system. Cause I'm literally on my last legs here. When I get that set up, we will have a stream and I will go over the policy and what it used to be and what it is now, and we'll get into it. But they paid every penny of attorney's fees. Every penny that I say, and I know, Robert, that you put in a lot more than $10,000 into this case. I know that you had, you had your, um, associates working on it. And, you know, Lexus was really great, by the way. She's really smart. She wrote a really great, um, brief on this. She wrote a terrific motion. And I just, um, the original filing, it was just really good. So I know you put so much into it. So I'm so glad they had to pay you all of that. And then I got Applebee's money on top of it. So the good news is that they had to give me a, a dinner, a couple dinners out and, um, and I'm-
Yeah, you can toast, uh, toast the school board president each time.
Actually, you know, if that check gets here soon, uh, I may put it towards the mini mac fund, uh, because this computer situation is untenable. So are you, are you covering, is that what you're doing over on your channel these days? Are you covering the, uh, the Trump trials and all that?
Uh, yeah, or V, yeah, the, uh, at, uh, on locals, you know, just, just whatever the, uh, topics are that people want to know about. But on Viva's show, it's everything. It's, but there's so many Trump trials.
I know. How can we possibly keep up?
You, you currently have six major active cases, four criminal cases in four jurisdictions, two federal, two state, plus New York City trying to bankrupt them in the show trial, plus the state of Colorado trying to keep them off the ballot and prohibit people from even voting for them. So the, you know, if, if for law and politics, Trump is the, the, and the system's hatred of him is the gift that keeps on giving. We've had something to talk about all the time for, for, uh, but it's accelerated again somehow. It's like, however crazy it looks, it somehow gets, uh, crazier. Uh, but the, uh, but what is the Maya trial?
Oh my God, the Maya Kowalski trial. Robert, this trial would make you crazy. Maya Kowalski is 17 years old. When she was 10, when she was nine, she was diagnosed with a very rare pain disorder called, um, chronic regional pain syndrome, CRPS. And her family had done everything. She had just become very, she, she stopped being able to walk at nine years old. And she had all this horrible pain in her leg that was crawling up her, to her torso. And she was unable to put, uh, weight on her feet anymore. Her parents took her to specialists. They took her, they had her in an inpatient OT, PT thing at Tampa General. Uh, they'd done it, they had done everything. They finally get to someone who says, this is not conversion disorder, which is what everyone was saying it was. Uh, he said, no, this is CRPS and she needs ketamine infusions because the, uh, oxycodone is not working for it to control the pain. And she can't do, she needs to do physical therapy, but she can't do that without, without, uh, having pain control, right? Cause she's in so much pain. So he starts giving her ketamine infusions and they're large doses. And this is experimental for sure. It's experimental, but it's not illegal because it, there are doctors doing it. The ketamine infusions work and she's able to do her PT and she's getting back up on her feet. She's actually like getting strong enough to put weight on her feet. And she has a terrible relapse, which happens with CRPS. Like they say that you have good days and bad days. She ends up at Johns Hopkins Hospital, children, all children's in Florida with bad stomach pains. And, uh, they take a look at the chart. They see the, the infusions that she's been getting. And her mother, who's a Polish woman and very direct, uh, says, this is what, and she's a nurse. My daughter needs the ketamine. That's the only thing that works. She needs this amount of it and you're, you guys aren't doing it right. Either give her the ketamine or I'm going to take her somewhere else. They call in a child abuse doctor who's a pediatrician with absolutely no background in CRPS or, or pain syndromes, or she's not a, she's not a neurologist. This kid's been to the best doctors in the country. This woman is very far from the best doctor in the country. She says, this mother has Munchausen syndrome by proxy. We're taking custody of the child. And they separate her from her mother. They put her basically in prison at Johns Hopkins. Uh, they don't believe that she's in pain. They touch her repeatedly when she's, you know, CRPS has this thing called alledinia, which means your, your skin, just a light touch feels like a knife. And so instead of listening to her, they just-
Like Jordan, what Jordan Peterson had for a period of time.
Oh, really? Well, it can come and go. I don't know. Uh, it, it can start from having an injury and then the injury never heals properly. And something just goes wrong with your, your nervous system. And they never believed her. So anyway, her mother was driven to suicide over this. Her mother actually killed herself. And after trying and trying to get her out of this hospital and trying to make people believe her, her mother realized that the court was never going to let her go. The hospital was never going to let her go and she was the one they were blaming. So she took her own life and they released this child back to her father within six days. So what does that tell you? You know, it's, it was obviously a crock. They, they, and don't, the chat wants to make sure I tell you, they also threw Jesus in a dumpster. That's right. This girl was Catholic, very Catholic. Her mother had, uh, you know, she had a rosary. She had her prayer book. She had a priest coming to give her communion and they confiscated her communion. They threw the consecrated body of Christ in a dumpster. I have photographic evidence. This is the person who did it from DCF. They came and they threw Jesus in a dumpster, uh, and would not allow uh, this child to practice her religion even in this hospital. I don't think we believe that this could happen to a Muslim family. I don't think they would have thrown a Quran in a dumpster or a prayer rug, but-
They allow them to do other things and, and places, you know, like Dearborn.
I have no-
You have the issues of what they're doing with, I mean, trying to maintain as their religious tradition, female circumcision in Dearborn.
Oh my God, is that happening?
Yeah, yeah. It's been the subject of litigation.
Well, of course now I feel like, well, um, what, who are we to tell them what to do with, uh, female genital mutilation? When we have Johns Hopkins All Children's Hospital doing gender reassignment surgeries on kids, like who, who are we to tell anybody not to do that? When we're cutting breasts off of 12-year-olds? No, we've lost the moral high ground, Robert. We've lost it entirely. And Johns Hopkins is, uh, part of the problem and they're, they're about to lose. Uh, we're on verdict watch.
Did, did sort of the family sue? So was it, was it the, was it the, well, on behalf of the daughter or was it the, the father who?
So it's Jack Kowalski's dad suing on behalf of Maya, her brother Kyle, and for the estate of Beata Kowalski. They actually got causes of action which are groundbreaking. They've, it's never happened before. They are actually going after Johns Hopkins for intentional infliction of emotional distress that led to the suicide of Beata Kowalski. And they got it. They got, they, they didn't get the, um, intentional negligence. Wait. No, they got the negligence, but they didn't get the intentional infliction of emotional distress for the suicide. But they got the negligence, if I'm correct. Chat, correct me if I'm wrong, but they got one of the two.
Is this in state court, federal court, in Maryland?
Florida, Florida.
Oh, I see. So there are, okay. What, what the, so, so it's state, I was, I was, that makes a little more sense. I was, how much did they get, did, I assume Johns Hopkins argued not only various forms of immunity, but argued that any prior order of the state, uh, is what caused the injury rather than them. Is that, what was their defense?
Okay, so there was a, uh, immunity issue, right? So it was decided, this case has been winding its way through the courts for seven years. It was decided that they had to separate out the DCF action. And the court found that the hospital acted in good faith when they made the call to DCF. So anything that happened after they made the call, um, they had immunity for. The, the problem is they got them on false imprisonment because the seven days before they made the call, they were holding Maya Kowalski in the hospital against her parents' will, will. False imprisonment is going forward. Battery is going forward. They held this child down. They stripped her to her underwear, took photographs of her against her will, and the pictures are hideous.
Were they, were they, so were they just obsessed that, that this was somehow a poor child who had been so under the influence of her mother that she was faking a disease?
Yes. And also I think they really hated Beata. I think as a Polish woman with an accent who was, you know, a nurse, she knew what she was talking about. They did not like that at all. They didn't like anything about Beata.
Remind me, did they voluntarily go to Johns Hopkins initially?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
They did. Yeah. So-
That's incredible. So the, so now it's, so how long did the trial last?
Thirty-one, thirty-two days.
Wow. So how much of it did you cover?
Every day.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
And we are now on verdict watch and, um, it's intense. And tomorrow, I'm, it's probably going to come in tomorrow. And it's the one day that I have an appointment in the afternoon.
I mean, usually this long of a trial, it, it takes, uh, probably a week for the jury to come back.
Yeah. And I, and this is such a complex case that I would be shocked if it didn't, if they got it done by tomorrow. Cause there's no court on Friday because Friday is a holiday. And so tomorrow-
Thinking, your juries hate to stay over the weekend. But in these kind of cases, they, if it has this kind of emotional impact, this kind of factual density, uh, you know, uh, now what is it in Florida? Is it, they need a nine to, is it a 12-person?
Six. It's a six-person jury and they-
Four out of six that you need or five out of six?
You need six out of six.
Oh, you need unanimous, a civil jury in a civil, well, that's interesting. So, well, that could definitely drag it out then.
Yeah, it's, it's very interesting and very complex. And the case has just really ripped open a wound in this country where parents are coming forward. Oh, and by the way, I forgot to tell you, Dr. Sally Smith, the child abuse pediatrician, she's being sued again, and so is Johns Hopkins by another family, same team of lawyers. They did it to another family. She's actually been reported on in USA Today as doing this to, uh, many families. False accusations of child abuse. It is a scandal.
Come the doctor assigned these cases?
Oh, she's the director of Pinellas County. She's the director of the child abuse, uh, um, you know, she's the director. Yeah. And the reason why they can sue her, she didn't even technically work for Johns Hopkins, but she represented herself as a Johns Hopkins doctor. She represented herself falsely, um, to, to the family.
I don't know what your experience was, but, uh, you know, I did a lot of representation pro bono for victims of abuse going back quarter century. And I, my experience has almost been universally negative with every form of childcare, foster care services out there. Not, not private ones. I've had very good experience there, but with the state actors that, uh, a lot of them come from abused backgrounds and frankly are themselves abusers. They give off the dynamics of abusers. They act like abusers. They sought out this job because they're abusers. They tend to side with abusers. They tend to oppose victims. I mean, it sounds insane, but I, I had this, I had the, the, what broke it for me was I had a case where they lied to me about what was happening. And I said, look, I'm not going to get involved in this case if there's allegations against multiple parties. I was like, that's not what we do. I'm only going to get involved if there's only allegations against the other party. Now, there were no allegations against my client, but they didn't disclose that his new girlfriend, there were allegations against as well as his ex-wife. Uh, they hid that from me. Didn't find out until the proceedings that that was going on, which, you know, the, you know, which my client would have taken corrective action, had he even known. They'd hide because they were lying all the way through to figure out what game they were going to play as they shopped the kids around between different abusive dynamics. And the one non-abuser, my client, was the one they wouldn't give the kids back to. Um, because they were hiding and sitting on other information about his girlfriend, which he would have dumped her in a second, he'd known any allegation was even there. But my experience, I mean, they're just bad, where I had like real kids, real victims, uh, they, they didn't even pursue the cases. They would buy the, the abusive parents', uh, uh, the abusive partners', uh, lies. And it was cases like, these were not like hard to prove cases. These are like, most abusers will have a pattern and won't just be that relationship. Won't be just that behavior with children. They'll have it with other, they'll have it in prior relationships. They'll have it with, if they have children in other relationships, if they were involved in a relationship with stepchildren, you'll find there's a long pattern because it's a deep psychological problem. But it's, it's the reason why so many people hate DCS is that, I mean, there's some good social worker types in there. I'm sure. I just hardly met any of them.
We never see any. And there are, there are some, but I mean, we had, I had one call that the show earlier today. We were doing like a call-in program while we were waiting for the verdict. And one of our listeners here is a social worker and has been for 25 years. And even she was like, yeah, no, there's, they're bad. There, there's bad workers and they're everywhere. And we're totally outnumbered. The chat's mad at me because I didn't even tell you about the imminent jeopardy report. A bombshell that came out in this case is that the hospital was in imminent jeopardy of losing its licensing when this occurred. And they, they were a, they were found through a federal investigation to have a culture of retaliation and retribution in the hospital. They weren't even stacking their oxygen tanks properly. They were in, in danger of exploding in the hospital and keeping, they were killing patients in the heart, at the children in the heart surgery area because the surgeons weren't washing their hands. This is Johns Hopkins All Children's is going down. And Greg Anderson and his law firm are the ones doing it. They're taking them down. And it is, it's beautiful to watch because we are watching institutional-wide corruption explode in our faces on a national stage in an area that I have been studying and reporting on for 20, 20 years now, the CPS and medical kidnapping, corruption bullshit. And it's wonderful to watch this happen. And that's why we're, we're just, we're like glued to our seats on this.
Yeah. I mean, I don't even think, I, I'm not sure precisely of what the replacement would be, but I think we would be better off if the DCSs of the world didn't exist. That I think they'd be more net harm than good.
Oh, absolutely. They absolutely, oh, you know what else they did? So another charge they're getting is fraudulent billing. So the hospital refused to believe she had CRPS, but they were billing the insurance company for CRPS the whole time.
Of course they were. That's classic. Oh, yes. Now that must've been tough to explain to the jury.
No, no, they, they completely came up with a whole thing about, well, that's just the working diagnosis code. And every time there's a working diagnosis, that code goes in the record. But it's like, um, no, I'm sorry.
That makes no sense. You can't say that's fake. It's not really happening. And then bill the insurance company and say it is.
And then they, they changed their story. They changed their defense several times during the case. On one hand, they would say she doesn't have CRPS. She never had CRPS. And at the same time, in the closing arguments, Shapiro, their lawyer is going, well, you know, she had CRPS before that she went into our hospital and she's going to have CRPS after the hospital. We didn't hurt her. She was going to suffer for the rest of her life anyway. That's literally their argument.
Yeah, that, that's like a variation of the tobacco arguments they used to make. The, that they shouldn't be held, the tobacco companies, because forever the tobacco companies got away with it. The, and then all the details that, all the information they've hid all the years came out. And then people came up with smart ideas about, I almost worked for one of the first people that did it. The Attorney General of Mississippi, Mike Moore, and the famous plaintiff's lawyer, who was Dickie Scruggs, who was featuring the film, The Insider. But they're, they come up with a way around it, which is to make juries more sympathetic by suing on behalf of the state Medicaid program. And then they got the discovery that led to big tobacco having to fix a lot of what they were doing and pay a price in other cases. The, but before then, the excuse had been some version of you were always screwed. You know, the, so it's not our fault that you're screwed. That, that kind of, of pretext, the, it's just, I mean, aside from the horrible tragedy of what happened here, things like the, the billing problem would have been, if I were there as defense lawyer, I would have figured out a way to settle or resolve it because that's almost an insurmountable defense to make. To say, we, you know, we took all these actions believing this was fake while we were billing the insurer, saying it was real.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it, I don't think that the, I think the jury is seeing it our way. They've, they've been deliberating for a total of like 11 hours now. They've come back with, with two questions. Both of those questions revolved around, we didn't see the report we wanted to see on the financial damages for Maya in the future. I think that's a good
They should be writing a check then. When they come back with that request, you're, you're, you're screwed if you're the defendant.
Yeah, you're, that's the anus
They say, how much? You want to double check the calculation? I mean, I've been on the other side of that where they weren't paying attention when I was presenting the financial damage aside. And I was like, oh, I need to settle this case. I'm not going to get any, they're not even writing down how much I'm asking for. They're not going to give me a check.
Yeah, they, they were trying to calculate how many zeros they're going to give her. And, and I personally believe this needs to be so painful that this sends a shockwave through the whole medical system. Because you, Robert, the stories that are coming out of our listeners here, I, I, they just make you cry. I've had people calling me all day. We've done a call-in show like old time radio, man. We've just been calling in and people are saying, this happened to me. No one believed me or my child was taken and they thought that I abused her and she fell at daycare or the daycare person may have abused her. There's so much going on here where people are just, they're under an oppressive boot, whether it's the medical tyranny we're living under or the government tyranny, and it's enough already. I have Cynthia Absug, who's been in my chat. I covered her story. I know, I, I think I might have talked to you about it a little bit before. She was, they called her in the press, they called her QAnon mom. It was so unfair. This is a woman who never even heard of Q. She's not even political. She's a registered Democrat. They smeared this woman. They took her son, same story, medical kidnapping. The doc, she did everything the doctors told her to do. And instead of going after the doctors for these so-called harmful medical tests, which were just a couple of EEGs, which are not harmful at all to anyone. Instead of going after the doctors, they went after the mom. They said she had Munchausen, same story. Took her child with no due process, put her through hell, made her fear for her life because she started thinking, I must be a part of a conspiracy. I must, I mean, why else would they take my child? She's believed the wrong people. She fled the state, not with her kid. They had her kid and they ended up chain, charging her with attempted kidnapping, which never happened. She went to jail. And I was in the courtroom and it was unbelievable how they had no evidence to put her there, but her public defender never defended her, didn't call her witnesses, didn't get her doctors on the stand to say what they ordered. It was a total shit show. There's no justice in this country sometimes for a certain type of person. And I think that we need, we're at a boiling point. People are sick of this. If you want to get an update on this case, Robert, watch the Netflix documentary, Take Care of Maya. Because the, she, the documentary was released like a month before the trial started. So it kind of, it was brilliant. It got people talking about it, thinking about it, freaking out. Like, how could this happen? And, and that's why I had to cover it because I have covered case after case after case. Rachel Bruno, Cynthia Absug, Justina Pelletieri, case after case of these kids, Drake Pardo in Texas, who get kidnapped by a hospital that refuses to listen to the parents that know what they're talking about. And this horrible tragedy happens. There have been suicides. I have, I lost Catherine Kasinoff. She was a, a woman. I was covering her case, her custody case. She went and had assisted suicide. This is hurting people all across the, the country. And, and it has to be stopped. And I, I feel like this case is going to bring a whole lot more attention to what's really going on.
Well, and what it should also further reveal is how COVID went the way it went. The corruption of the hospital system was critical to the corruption of everything that took place vis a vis the medical treatment or lack thereof in COVID.
Yeah. Well, everything kind of, that kind of revealed all kinds of corruption, right? I had Mo in the deep end on earlier, talking about how she was one of those parents who learned during COVID school what they were really teaching her kid. And they were teaching all this DEI stuff and, and nobody knew until we were locked down. And we didn't realize how much power these people had just gotten over our lives and our kids and everything, until it was too late. And now we're suffering the result of that. But at least our eyes are open, although, you know, we woke up to a nightmare. That's what it feels like.
Yep. No doubt about it.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for being here, Robert. I sure appreciate you. And thank you for taking my lawsuit. Thank you for fighting for me and for fighting for the right of everybody to go and address their public bodies for grievances without being intimidated or retaliated against or muted or whatever the hell else they want to do. I, I really appreciate you and I, I just have lots of love for you.
Fantastic. And it was great. You took the case and it's reminded everybody that sometimes you can fight back and win.
You absolutely can. Thank you so much. And everybody, I'm out of here too. So you guys all go and have a wonderful